Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting for October 24th. If I could get everybody to stand on their feet, rise. Commissioner Obama is going to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Right, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, with all its nations, and to equal liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I'd like to introduce our new planning commissioner, Jay Malick, to my left here. We now have a full commission, so that's a good thing. We shouldn't have any more cancellations for lack of a quorum, hopefully. So, welcome, Jay. Roll call, city planner?
Certainly Chair Rosales. Chair Rosales.
President.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Obama.
President.
Commissioner Dodd's.
Here.
Commissioner Malick.
President.
Commissioner Custer.
Here.
Commissioner Simons.
Here.
Let the record show, all seven planning commissioners are present and we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, we'll ask the audience if they'd like to address the commission for any matters not on tonight's agenda. If so, please come forward. Not seeing anybody come forward, then we'll go to approval of the minutes from our last meeting, October 10th. Any discussion before ask for motion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, Commissioner Custer.
I would second.
Second. Commissioner Obama, any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Commissioner Malick, yeah, you can use your screen hopefully there.
Chair Rosales, let the record show, the motion passed, 6-0 with 1 abstain.
Thank you. We have nothing on the agenda under consent calendar, nor anything listed under transportation items, so we'll go to our first public hearing item. There's only one this evening. It's item four, which is consideration of a recommendation for a conditional use permit and waiver of location requirements to operate a cannabis distribution facility at 1629 Ordway. The name of the project and applicant is Herb Girl Incorporated. Distribution facility is the location. Disclosures, I'll start. Staff report, familiar with the location, and received a number of emails on this project. Vice Chair Morrissey?
I looked at the staff report and saw the emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Dodd's?
Staff report, emails, and I am very familiar with the area.
Thank you. Commissioner Obama?
Staff report, emails, then we got today, and also, I was on the commission when we approved the other cannabis facility, Urban Leaf, so very familiar with the site.
Thank you. Commissioner Simons?
Staff report and just the emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Malick?
I read the staff report and the emails.
And Commissioner Custer?
Read the staff report, drove by the site, looked at it on Google Maps, and read the emails.
Terrific, thank you. The floor is yours. I'm sorry if I don't have your name in front of me at the moment. If you'd introduce yourself to the commission.
Yeah. Good evening, Chair Commissioners. My name is Dane Thompson with the Planning Division. I'm here to present item number four tonight, Herb Girl Cannabis Distribution Facility at 1629 Ordway. The project is located in an industrial area south of Oceanside Boulevard off Ordway. Cannabis facilities, with the exception of testing labs, are considered regulated uses, so they require a CUP approved by the city council. Tonight, you're being asked to make a recommendation, the city council. Herb Girl is not proposing to construct or expand a building. They are just proposing to utilize an existing suite with their proposed tenant improvements. Article 36 of the zoning ordinance prescribes buffers for regulated uses from residential districts, other regulated uses, and sensitive uses. If the regulated use cannot meet these locational requirements, they must request a waiver and justify why they think that waiver should be granted. I will go into further detail on the waiver in the coming slides. Herb Girl is proposing to occupy about half of the space in this building, the other half of which is leased to Left Coast, which is another cannabis facility. They do manufacturing and distribution. Here's the floor plan for your reference. Shipments will be received inside the building in the rear. This project is consistent with the general plan in that it does not have significant impacts, it would not bring foot traffic to the area, and promotes the exportation of goods. Distribution facilities are a permitted use in the limited industrial district, and the use will not decrease the general welfare of people in the vicinity. As stated before, the project does not meet the locational requirements for regulated uses in the zoning ordinance, so they are requesting a waiver. Specifically, the location is 350 feet from a church, 550 feet from a massage establishment, and 150 feet to the nearest residential district. The next closest, sorry, I already went over that. Of course, the site that they're attached to is also a regulated use, being a cannabis In this diagram, the yellow lines denote residential districts. Blue is sensitive uses and green is regulated uses. While the site is technically 150 feet from a residential district, that district is across the Sprinter tracks, and the next closest residence by foot is outside the 1,000-foot The church that is across the street from the site is about 350 feet from the site, but this project will be conditioned to not operate on Sundays, which is the busiest time for a church. The site does share a wall with another cannabis facility and is 500 feet away from a massage establishment. However, the purpose for separating regulated uses is to effectively not create a red light district where you have an over-concentration of regulated uses. For instance, if you had a liquor store next to a bar next to a smoke shop. Because cannabis facilities are not open to the public, staff believes that this location still meets the intent of Article 36 of the zoning ordinance. To operate a cannabis facility in the city, you need a local license, a regulated use permit, and a state license. The facility will be inspected annually for compliance with city codes and the local license. Cannabis is extremely regulated in California, so the state created a track-and-trace system that you might have heard referred to as "seed to sale." The Department of Cannabis Control at the state level will regulate that and enforce it. The applicant hosted an open house in May earlier this year where most of the concerns centered on odor and customers. The city has a strict odor policy that all cannabis facilities must comply with, and Oceanside currently does not allow storefront dispensaries. Staff believes this project will not be detrimental to the surrounding area, will not create a land-use incompatibility, and is therefore recommending that the findings or the waiver of locational restrictions be affirmed. With that, staff recommends that you confirm issuance of a Class I categorical exemption per SEQA and recommend approval of conditional use permit, CUP 2110, and waiver of locational requirements with findings and conditions of approval therein. We did add one condition just today to the resolution, conditioning them to not operate on Sundays, which was included in the staff report but omitted from the resolution. So you should have that at your seats. The applicant also has a presentation, and both of us will be available for questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Dane. I'll start off. I have a question about the ordinance the city council adopted and then amended to allow for the waivers. You touched on it a little bit, but can you get a little bit more in depth on that? I guess the issue here for me is, I mean, we dealt with the Left Coast before, not so much the church and the community area, but the fact that they're literally next door to an existing one, so that overlap issue. Did the waiver that the council allowed to happen, did it contemplate that? And you talked a little bit about the concentration of, you used the liquor stores as the example, but can you expand a little bit on that?
Yeah. Chair Rosales, I am not aware of the city council thinking for the future or if Herb Girl was to locate next to Left Coast, but obviously, the Left Coast waiver has been granted before they started operating. Staff also believes that because they are both not customer-facing, they don't increase foot traffic, they don't have any draw to the area, that it will not create an over-concentration of regulated uses in the area, even though it's connected literally by a shared wall.
Okay. Let me work through that. Any questions first out? Go ahead, Commissioner Obama.
Thank you. You did a good job.
Thank you.
Did a good job on your first presentation to us.
Thanks.
I was going to ask you a question, Commissioner Rosales, that was one of my questions also, but the other question is, that was brought up by the neighbor next door's lawyer, was the parking. They say that the parking isn't sufficient. Can you kind of, I know like in the staff report, it makes it sound like it's fine, so can you maybe just kind of go over the parking and maybe there's something we didn't see?
Of course. Commissioner Obama, the calculation that was provided in that letter of opposition was incorrect. The parking ratio for this site is one space per 750 square feet of gross floor area. They were assuming a calculation of one space per 500 square feet. That's where it seemed to be an issue for them, but the site is adequately parked.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see anybody else dial up at the moment. So you said the applicant had a presentation?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lindsay Campbell, and I am the owner of Herb Girl, Inc. First, I would like to thank city staff for their help and guidance on this project. We have worked closely together for the last year on perfecting this application through numerous submittals and are here today asking for you to approve the CUP for this project. I was born and raised in Oceanside, and I have lived here my whole life. I love this community. I'm an Oceanside business owner, and I am happy to be raising my family here. I'm applying for this conditional use permit with my business partner and father, Mark Campbell. My father operates a successful steel construction company that has been open for the last 30 years, and I have had the privilege of working with him for the last 10 years. Our construction company has built numerous buildings in Oceanside, most notably the Pier Side apartment buildings that initiated the revitalization of the downtown coastal area. We also own other commercial and residential properties here and have had the pleasure of watching Oceanside grow and develop over the last 30 years. I have always been proud to call Oceanside home. I supported California's measures to legalize cannabis, and when Oceanside legalized cannabis businesses in 2018, I began developing a business plan for a cannabis distribution facility in my hometown. After years of research, including getting a degree in business entrepreneurship and consulting with professionals in the cannabis industry, my dream to operate a women-owned cannabis business facility began to come to fruition with the issuance of our business license in 2019. We then submitted our conditional use permit application in July of 2021. At Herb Girl, our mission is to offer safe, tested, and regulated cannabis products from a licensed and compliant source. As a women-owned business, we value having a diversified staff, including offering management positions to minority and veteran applicants. Our business will provide well-paying jobs with benefits and will strengthen the local small business community through ancillary services and business-to-business transactions. Herb Girl, Inc. follows policies that combine business success with an understanding of the importance of our workers, our customers, the environment, and our community. Key to this philosophy is being a good neighbor, so we put every effort possible into the community outreach involved in opening a licensed cannabis business. As longstanding members of the Oceanside community, we deeply value Oceanside as our workplace and home. Even though a portion of our facility at 1629 Ordway has been previously approved for cannabis use, we wanted to revisit this with our neighbors and fellow property owners in our industrial park. We have established a good reputation and have come to know many of the tenants and owners over the last 13 years. We focused our community outreach on those we believe will be most affected by our application, our neighbors at the Oceanside Gateway Business Park. We invited property owners, as well as the tenants of those properties, to an open house on May 20th, 2022. There was a total of six attendees at the open house. Most attendees were interested in the cannabis facility application process, and we enjoyed getting acquainted with them. Overall, we were met with positive and gracious support. We believe our property is an ideal location for cannabis distribution because most tenants in the business park offer ancillary business services that generate very little customer traffic. 1629 Ordway is in the second row of buildings from Oceanside Boulevard with almost no visibility from major crossroads and is very well-lit at night. We will have 24-hour onsite security, and with the city's requirement that we have no visible cannabis signage, we believe that most residents and passersby will have no idea there is a cannabis business at this location, especially since we are not a retail location and will generate no customer traffic. Finally, our business park CCNRs have been amended to allow cannabis manufacturing and distribution at our property after a majority vote was held to support the amendment. Regarding the waiver of locational requirements, the facility location, 1629 Ordway, has already been approved for a waiver with a previous applicant for Left Coast LLC. Left Coast currently operates in the south half of the building, and our application is for the north half of the same building, which we have owned since 2009. To conclude, we would like to again thank staff for their considerable work on this project, and thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to address you here today. We sincerely hope that you see the value this project will bring to the Oceanside business community, and we ask for your full support on our conditional use permit application. My father and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Obama?
Thank you very much. You were a very, very well-understood presentation. Did you say you've owned the building since 2009 that you're in?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Malick?
Hi. Can you explain, tell us the number of employees and the hours they work?
So, starting out, we plan to have around 10 employees, and then, once we get fully operational, that number will grow to around 15 to 20. As said before, there will be no work on Sunday. The standard hours are going to be Monday to Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
And how many vehicles will you operate out of there for the distribution effort?
Right now, in the beginning, we're considering having one to two vehicles. Those vehicles will be parked inside of our building, not taking up any of the parking spaces that are reserved for the rest of the business park. So, one to two vehicles starting out, and then, you know, hopefully more. But like I said, they can all be stored inside of our building.
Commissioner Dodd's?
Will security only be available during work hours, or is it 24/7?
It's 24/7.
Tom, do you have a question? Yeah. Commissioner, Vice Chair Morrissey, go ahead.
Could you talk a little bit about the market that you serve?
You mean Oceanside or the cannabis market?
Who do you sell to? Who's the market?
Okay, yes. So, our business is a kind of like a wholesale, cannabis wholesale, you can think of it as. So, we will be purchasing from large-scale distributors and then filling the void. San Diego has a big bottleneck for wholesale cannabis products, so we would like to offer those products to smaller businesses and more local retail stores that don't have a good opportunity to buy from much larger-scale distributors. So, our plan is to offer cannabis products to retailers and delivery services, everyone's licensed. We have a plan to make sure that it's going from a licensed distributor to a licensed retailer, and then, once those applications are approved, we will go on to distributing from large-scale distributors to smaller local businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions from the Commissioners, but we'll bring you back if we do have some.
I do have some.
Oh, there we go. One, sorry. Commissioner Custer, go ahead.
So, as you grow, and you said your vehicles for distribution would be parked inside, how many will you be able to park at your maximum?
We can, our space, as you saw in our drawings, our tenant improvement only takes up about half of the warehouse space at this time, so there's a large amount of space that will not be used for the business that can use to be parked vehicles. Can I just say something?
Yeah, I just want to, I think she overshot on the amount of employees. It's going to be three or four to start, and then it will probably get up to 15. I also wanted to say that Ordway is right on the other side of the building, and you can probably park 100 cars there. We can park there during the day, can't park there at night. The build-out on the building is only taking up 2,000 square feet. We've got about 6,000 square feet, so everything that's being built can be extended, including the entrance for the vehicles. We're only going to start with one vehicle, and maybe we'll get up to two. If we get up to two, we will extend that bay to fit two vehicles in. The reason I'm speaking is because I designed the build-out, and the whole process was meant to have secured a walk door for visitors to come in, check in, before we even opened up the door to the building, and then we will allow the distributors, or the, it's not distributors, it's suppliers. It's people that, you know, supply packaged licensed goods, and we will be selling those to licensed dispensaries. So, yeah, and I think Lindsay shot a little high on the amount of employees, and there 's a pretty big industrial park there. The wine distributor doesn't even use any of its parking spaces, maybe two of all his, like 15 parking spaces.
And that's right.
And like I said, you can park on Ordway if that was, you know, an issue. And what I have seen so far, that there has been no parking issue in that lot, and we're also allowed to park anywhere. So, people park in my lot, we go across and park behind the vineyard, so that there has been ample parking spots. I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Great, thank you. Thank you. We'll call you up if we have any other questions.
Thank you.
It is a public hearing. Do we have any slips to speak?
Yes, Chairman Rosales, we have four slips this evening. Would you like me to proceed?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Please come forward in the order I call your name. Be sure to state your name for us. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker tonight will be, I think it's Mirlos. Our second will be Ervinia. Our third will be Dylan Campbell, and our fourth will be Adrian Orozco.
Hello, my name is Miklos Camposano, and I'm a native San Diegan, and I recently moved my family to Oceanside, so now I'm a homeowner in Oceanside. I drive by this property pretty much every day now, about two miles away from the project, and I want to thank everyone from the planning commission and the staff for putting this project together. All the documentation online was great, something like that. I've been an avid supporter of the cannabis legal industry for about six years now. I work with Cirec, who provides a range of ancillary services to the cannabis businesses in the state of California. Having met and worked with a lot of professionals in this space from around the world regarding this misunderstood plant, it has been clear to me that cannabis businesses are often misunderstood and overburdened by red tape. The statistics prove that the only way to stop the illicit market is to have a vibrant legal market. Distribution is the key link between the legal cannabis businesses, as designated by the DCC. It is imperative that we give the vital B2B businesses all the support we can from the community, and so that we can create that safe and regulated industry as the state is trying to design. These businesses, in my experience, are great for communities. They bring in jobs, taxes, revenue, education to the public, which is sorely needed, and I have many friends and clients that are interested in investing in Oceanside if there's any, how would I say it, future plans towards expanding legal cannabis in the city of Oceanside. Thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello. Hi, my name is Earl Vinael Walker. I am a 30-year, born and raised resident of Oceanside, California, and I'm also an honorably discharged veteran of the United States Air Force. I'm currently the managing director of Shoreline Partners in La Jolla and a committee member of the Association for Corporate Growth, representing small and mid-sized businesses who are looking for exit plans or growth and expansion strategies through mergers and acquisitions and new business startups. I stand in support of Herb Girl's application as it brings new, good-paying jobs to the community of Oceanside, but also it segues Oceanside as a city into new verticals of economical expansion. And for this reason, I encourage you as well to consider that in approving Herb Girl's application.
Hello, my name is Dylan Campbell. I'm born and raised in Oceanside. I've lived here for 28 years. I'm a proud member of the community and in total support of Herb Girl's application. I think it's very important and detrimental that we keep this market in safe hands and under safekeeping and approved with regulation, you know? So, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Orozco. I'm a C-10 electrical contractor, business owner from Oceanside. I live three miles away from Mark Campbell's business. I know him for more than 10 years in a business partner relationship, and then we became friends and family. He's a man well-talented, skilled in management, a father, family, and business owner. He is my mentor. I look forward to seeing success in this venture. I really appreciate your time, and I go for him. I vote for him pro. Any questions, I'm here, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is that it for slips?
That concludes our speakers.
Good, thank you. You don't have to submit a slip to be able to speak to the commission, so if you didn't submit one and would like to come forward before we close the public hearing, now is your time. Great, thank you. So we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any further discussion. Anybody? Then I will...
I'll make a motion.
Oh.
I'll make a motion that we adopt staff's recommendation to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2022 P28, recommending city council approval of a CUP 2110 and a waiver of locational criteria for a proposed cannabis distribution facility at 1629 Ordway and recommending city council certification of a Class 1 categorical exemption for the SEQA Act, Article 19, Section 15, 301, existing facilities.
Thank you. We have a motion and a question or clarification for you, Rob. That motion already captures the, I'll throw my glasses on, the change in the resolution about the business hours? Or do we need me to clarify that?
Chair Rosales, it would be beneficial to read the modification into the record by a reference to the condition number or a general description of what has been included in that condition.
Okay.
So, to add to that, the hours of operation for this operation are limited to 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday to Saturday, and then no operations shall be allowed on Sundays. These hours may be further limited by the Planning Commission upon review of any valid issues or complaints pertaining to the hours of operation.
Terrific. So we have a motion with that additional language included. Any discussion or a second? I'll second it. We have a second by Commissioner Dodds. Commissioner Balma, my board was lit up, did you?
I was just, I was just going to second it, but also offer the applicant all the luck in their establishment. I think it's great that you're doing a woman business. I think that's wonderful. So, go, girl. And so, yeah, I support.
Great, so we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Chair Rosales, let the record show that the motion passes 7-0.
Great, thank you. Good luck. That concludes our public hearing items for tonight. Item five is being continued until November 7. So we will move to appeal of city planners' determination on the agenda, and I don't see any items listed. I also don't see any items listed under discussion items or, correction, under miscellaneous actions. All of you should see a calendar for the Planning Commission for the upcoming year 2023. City planner, did you want to go over any of that or if, commissioners too, if you have any questions or comments? Does everybody have a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Rob, if you want to. Do we need to approve or just discuss and review and nod our heads? What would you like us to do?
Absolutely, Chair Rosales. The, the action is request for the Planning Commission to consider and approve the agenda or the calendar for the 2023 year. And we did look at conflicts and avoiding major sporting events and so on and holidays.
Well, thank you for doing that. We certainly don't want any conflicts with sporting events. So, do you need us to actually take a vote or?
A vote is the standard procedure.
Great, terrific. So, no motion needed. Let's go ahead. If we can get the vote board up, thank you. Either yea or nay, please. Looks like that was approved 6 to, 7 to 0. We have seven now.
Chair Rosales, let the record show, motion passed 7-0.
Great. Thank you, Rob. Then we will go to city planners' and commissioners' reports, starting with me. I don't have anything really for this evening. Again, welcome, welcome to the commission. Commissioner Malik, it's nice to have a full commission. Again, we had, at times, a little bit of a bump over the last 12 months or so that where we sometimes didn't have enough commissioners to convene a meeting, so it's nice to have a full slate of commissioners on board. Commissioner Morrisey, any report this evening?
I do. So, I want to talk a little bit about Oceanside's Finest basketball program. So, I'm just going to read one paragraph, and I have a flyer if you'd like to see it, but it's, it's a, a program that's been going on for probably 20 years. Oceanside's Finest is Southern California's premier youth basketball organization focused on the teaching the fundamentals of the game while being 100% cost-free for all kids. Founded over 25 years ago, Oceanside's Finest gives kids the opportunity to be mentored by experienced and caring coaches, play an active sport in a supportive yet competitive environment, and learn important skills like teamwork and leadership. And it's one of the things that no, no kid is, is turned away. It's ages 5 through 14, and I've been to a couple of these practices, and for someone that played high school basketball, I can't do what these kids do. They can dribble behind their backs, you know, between their legs, and they have three practices a week, and two of the practices are just on skills. And then if someone, you know, exhibits the, the skills and the, the attitude, then they're given a jersey. There's something coming up on November 17 at the Senior Vet Center. If anyone wants to take a look at it, it's 100% free for the kids, so the person and the group that provides all this is looking for some help. It's a 501(c)(3), so that's November 17 at 5:30 at the Senior Vet Center. And if you want a flyer, I'll be happy to give you one.
Thank you, Tom. Commissioner Dodds?
Nothing to report, but I am actually excited to see this. I did coach AAU basketball for some time, so it's good to see that we are still supporting our youth in athletics.
Absolutely. Commissioner Balma, any reports?
I was at the Ocean Camp Appeal to city, to the city council a few weeks, maybe it was a week ago. There was over like 40 people that spoke. It was a very long night, but I wanted to say till the end, when the city council unanimously supported our approval of Ocean Camp, and it's kind of an exciting, the, most of the people that spoke were all very excited, and a lot of them from the surf industry and related businesses that were very excited about the opportunity to have something like this in Oceanside. It's definitely a game changer. So, I, I just want to tell you that we did good on our approval and it was upheld by the city councils.
Great project.
Yeah, definitely. Commissioner Simons?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Malik?
Happy to be here, nothing to report.
And Commissioner Custer?
Nothing to report.
Terrific. So we will go to city planners. Rob, thanks for filling in for Sergio this evening.
Absolutely, Chair Rosales. Going forward with this commission on November 7, we have a couple items scheduled. The continuation of the Inclusionary Housing Zone Amendment that is amending the zoning ordinance to remove language related to the, the update of, of the city's Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And then we also have a railer coastal permit for the Houchen addition. It's a second-story addition to a, a single-family home on Pacific Street. And I'll also mention, on Wednesday of this week, October 26, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the council chambers, the Planning Division is hosting the second workshop for the general plan update, which seeks community input on draft goals and policies for the general plan elements, including the health, healthy and livable community element, vital and sustainable resources element, and the safe and resilient environment element. And this will be a workshop format, open to the public between 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That is all I have to report.
Terrific. City attorney, we rarely ask you, but do you have any reports for this evening or just want to say hello?
Hey, Barbara.
Good. Thanks, Barbara. All right, then we adjourn until November 7. Thank you.